Because I looked up the one that, that Tate has.
Uh huh.
And that was the, and I can't remember the whole name, but it was Nancy Yates, somebody.
Hand.
Hand, okay. Cause my wife's maiden name was Nancy Yates.
Uh huh.
But, and that's how I remembered that, but it wasn't the same Nancy Yates, unfortunately.
How do we shut this off? I don't wanna listen to myself.
Uh, the microphone, so if you hold down the button, it'll shut off, but anytime your hand's off of it, best thing to do is just push it, push it backwards. That'll, that'll keep you from being picked up on.
Okay, good. Hi there.
How's everybody?
Alright.
Thursday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Bass, where you doing?
The remains of the golf course.
Hey.
Ah.
Thirty-one acres.
I was gonna ask you about that, yes.
So y'all might could use this.
Yes.
Just in case.
Yeah.
I don't know how updated.
That is pending.
It probably hadn't changed much. I did, I did have a good meeting, uh, with.
Directly across from the pending.
Yeah, 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 like, the, these are the golf, okay. That is pending, oh wow.
That is, according to Realtor.
Who's telling them that?
It's on Realtor dot com, it's pending.
Wow, wow.
Yep.
What I said, if he gets the price, yes!
Oh yeah.
Cause I used to get golf balls out of my field, cause I'm that close.
Yeah, that's, the family that I'm staying at, is, uh.
That has to be, uh, that'll have to be fixed, and so he's gonna add that fix.
Chris Harold's family, the Harold family.
But those are the two houses.
We go that we have, where us and Hotman.
Just north of the golf course on sixty-eight, that's who owns that now.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the golf course are, he cut off some property to give to his kids or relatives.
Exactly, and Chris is one of the kids, and Chris has ten acres. Chris has green scapes, the Green Ridge Landscaping Solutions. And he does our subdivision, up there, we just contracted with him.
It makes a lot of sense.
They do a good job, but he's got, he did all the Tarmac's locations, and then he does.
No, but.
Turm, Community Chris Control, just outside of the, by right intersection.
This is all small town, no how, nobody knows, I didn't know that. I do know that he bought, the, a piece of land that was between him and, um.
High needles.
No, not high needles, but, um, along sixty-eight, there's another piece.
Oh, okay.
So there's a rental house, and then there's Kevin.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Your notice had gone out, yet I've sent it out soon, but not yet, I, I like that, I noticed on ten days.
Oh, Kevin Middleton.
Oh, okay.
He's an old relation somehow, around Mitchell. And then the field is mine, of the rest of it. And then there's Danny Enterprise, Danny Smith Enterprises.
Right, right.
With the equipments, and then some other people. But, interesting that it's pending.
That's according to Realtor.
Of course, it really does.
And.
It's already part of that big development.
Look, at two point seven million dollars, if they got the asking price for thirty acres, that's ninety thousand dollars.
That's insane.
Residential developer is probably not gonna pay that kind of money.
Yeah, but it is, it was marketed as.
I think you're right, that's cause, I think the other, other quarter is, um, commercial more, because they had hoped for a Lowe's Hardware to go in on that one years ago. I mean.
Yeah.
At least ten or twelve years ago.
That would've been really convenient for me.
As many times as we could at Lowe's.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, you know, if you're ever looking for me, that's where I would be.
Lowe's Hardware?
And right now, I'm up here, so at least, give me, which is not all bad, I don't spend money while I'm here usually. But.
Compared to Florida.
We talked last time, I think, Max had sold out.
Sorry, who?
Max Gardner, Tom Max is sold.
I didn't know that.
Oh really?
Yep, he sold to a large operation out of Arizona. That was. Effective the middle of last month, so it's like the fourteenth or fifteenth.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Fourteenth or fifteenth.
Do you sell all the locations, or just?
The sun comes up at eight thirty, and there's that.
I know he's got one.
I heard it, I haven't talked to Max or to Jonathan in detail, but. They're, third hand, that they did not buy the Eden location, but they bought everything.
Have they changed the name? No, just different.
Yep.
Yeah, I haven't seen Max Gardner.
Yeah, Jonathan, well, he lives in my neighborhood, he moved from Oak Ridge to North Ridge. Built a house on the lake. He's been here a year and a half, we moved in June of last, twenty-three.
Now, you said he moved to North Ridge?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it wasn't long ago, it wasn't long ago.
I've got a friend who's looking for a plot of land, hundred, twenty acres, he can't find nothing, so he doesn't have that kind of money.
Well, that's the thing, we got some friends too, and, but the prices that everybody's asking are just.
Well, there's, uh, there's a parcel for sale up on Ellisboro. That. It's not overly priced, but, I mean, it's still probably under thirty thousand per acre.
How many acres?
I think it's thirty, I'm not, I'll have to look, uh.
Well, last week, I had pulmonary embolisms, and I was like, oh my gosh. I was just, I was out of hot, just out of the hospital yesterday.
Oh my god.
I mean, it just come out, boom.
Holy cow.
Yes, it was very sudden, and I was feeling so bad, and so.
Of course.
Bolling out, I mean, I was ready to say, well, sometime.
You're not.
Time to let the farm go. Glad I didn't. Oh, it's seven o'clock, sorry guys, who we waiting for?
Well, um, you can start whenever you'd like, Curtis should be here, I'm not sure where he's at, but he can, he can roll in.
Well, gentlemen and ladies, I think we should open the meeting, let that be known, we're, I'm sorry, I've been yapping, and we're three minutes late. First order of business is the call to order and pledge allegiance. So if you all may stand, face the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Robbie, are you recording?
I am, yeah.
Okay.
Next business is review and adopt the agenda, chair will entertain a motion after you guys review it.
I'll make the motion, we adopt the agenda as it is.
Mister Southern, so motions, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Stevenson, seconds, all those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, passed, review and adopt the following minutes of the regular town pla- town planning board meeting. Again, chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept them as they stand, without reading.
Mister Southern does makes a motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
Southern, Mister Stevenson, all seconds, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed, new business, oath of office administered by the town clerk, Mister Robbie Lee, would you do the honors?
Yeah, be glad to.
Looks like you're all alone.
I know.
If Curtis shows up, we'll get his at another time, but just keep in mind, this'll, so we'll do this now, and then it'll go into effect January first. And, uh, but, this was, uh, your last one had alternate on there, so this for, for technical purposes, we'll do it, so. Step this one, step right over here, and you can, uh.
Do you wanna swear or affirm?
Right, you got, yeah, if you want to, just, uh, just raise your, your right hand, put your left hand on the bottom, and if you wanna look at this, it'll make it a little bit easier for you, sorry. You hold that and put it out here, not you. Alright, just repeat that for me, aye, state your name.
Aye, Andrea Pril.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowling swear.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
State of North Carolina. Constitutional powers.
The constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are, or may be.
Which are, or may be.
Established for the government.
Established for the government.
That are.
That are.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The constitution and laws.
The constitution and laws.
Of said states.
Of said states.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The constitution of the United States.
The constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
Ability.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As town planning board member.
As town planning board member.
For the town of Stokesdale.
For the town of Stokesdale.
North Carolina.
North Carolina.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, hey, real.
Yep, yeah, you can sign it after you talk, too.
You're in the arm now.
Been up too long, Eddie.
Yeah, that was a long thing.
Think that was longer than I, than I.
I thought you guys said them all at one time.
It's a good thing it's a two-year term.
That's right.
Next agenda item, the public hearing, rezoning case twenty-four dash one one dash P L B D dash zero zero one zero one. Would you present this to it, would you present this to us, please?
Hello? Good evening, members of the board, my name is Oliver Bass, I'm planner with the Guilford County Planning Department. Uh, I will present the staff report on the proposed rezoning case twenty-four dash eleven dash P L B D dash zero zero one zero one. Property located at eight four zero zero Lyman Street from, uh, Guilford County Tax Parcel, sixteen one six four four zero one. This is a request to rezone the subject property, which contains a total of one point seven six two acres, from C Z L I, conditional zoning light industrial to L I, light industrial. The planning board will make a recommendation to the town's, Stokesdale Town Council, which will have the final approval authority to approve or not, or deny the request. The existing zoning permit only automobile repair service major as the use, with the, which is constricting for development of this property. Changing to L I would provide, would provide the owners with additional flexibility and uses to market and develop the property consistent with other uses and zoning adjac- uh, zoning adjacent. The request is consistent with the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan designation of Town Core, which is intended to support Stokesdale growing population and limit sprawl through a mixture of commercial business, institutional, and residential uses accompanied by public open space, thus is, if approved, a future land use plan amendment is not required. Regarding to the nature of the request, the light industrial district is primarily intended to accommodate limited manufacturing, wholesaling, warehousing, research and development, and related commercial services activities, which in their normal operations have little to no adverse effect on adjoining property. Uh, the existing ra- the existing land uses around the property, for the existing property, the parcel contains a small commercial building and a parking area. Surrounding uses, to the north, you have vacant industrially zoned land, to the south, you have industrial zoned and used property. To the east, you have vacant and single-family residential separated by U S Highway sixty-eight north, and to the west, you have industrially zoned and used property separated from this parcel by Lyman Street. With regards to the infrastructure and community, one of the key points is, uh, water and sewer services for private septic, would be, the provider would be private septic system, and it's located near the town of Stokesdale Water System. Transportation, Lyman Street does not have a current traffic count data, however, N C Highway sixty-eight north is a major thoroughfare per, the adopted twenty-twenty-four collective street and thoroughfare plan, and currently has forty-one hundred average annual daily trips. Proposed improvements, the non-proposed at this time. However, any, any future development may require N C D O T driveway permit. Uh, projected tra- traffic generation, we are unable to determine at this time since a final use has not been determined. Uh, development may be subject to N C D O T road improvements included but not limited to turn lanes and acceleration and deceleration lanes. Uh, moving on to the land use analysis. The land use plan is covered under the Stokesdale Land Use Plan, that's what's adopted in two thousand and seven. The plan recommendation is Town Core, and the Town Core is defined as the area bordered by Highway, N C, Highway N C sixty-eight, N C sixty-five, and N C one fifty-eight. Area within the scenic corridor, south of N C one fifty-eight, between N C one sixty-eight and sixty-five, certain additional areas bordering N C sixty-five and North Carolina one fifty-eight, as shown on the land use map. The plan recognizes the Town Core as a center of commerce and social activity that, that will continue to serve the demands of Stokesdale growing population, while maintaining its historical small-town appeal. The public accommodates this through a mixture of commercial businesses, institutional, and residential uses accompanied by public open space, it is important to have space for businesses within Stokesdale, and also to limit the sprawl of such business. Uh, staff recommends approval of this proposed rezoning. Uh, as it relates to reasonableness, the proposed rezoning action is reasonable in the public interest because it's in the, in an area where existing surrounding land uses and zoning are light industrial, and residential zoning is separated from this site by a major thoroughfare. Additionally, Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan encourages businesses and, business entities in the Town Core to reduce sprawl, and the L I zoning dish will allow for additional use flexibility over the existing C Z zoning. Consistency, the request is consistent with the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan designation, and if approved, a future land use amendment is not required. That concludes the staff report at this time.
Is there any questions from the board for Mister Bass? Uh, Mister Bass, I have a question, um, property H, Pierman, is that a residential area or not?
Property H?
Uh huh. Pierman, James, Teresa, Balua. That would be right across the street, Lyman Street, from the subject property.
So that'll be. East of the subject property, correct?
Yes.
Maybe west.
West of, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, uh, it's industrially zoned and used property separated by Lyman Street, yes.
Okay.
This is reference to the report.
That's not a res- the only residential property is, um. Which one is residential? You said that there's a residential property separated from property by sixty-eight.
Yeah, to the west, there is a, to the east, there is a, uh, residential property, uh, and that's pretty much the extent of the adjacent residential properties to this parcel.
Which one is residential, I don't know.
That's, uh, I don't know, that's property E, Environment Solutions.
I'm not looking at the, uh, okay.
I believe that's the least residence, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, property C appears to be have a resident, single-family resident. At least it's a single-family residentially zone.
Alright, and to make sure that we all understand what light industrial is, would you just run down the permitted uses by right in light industrial, I mean, it's, it's just a list there.
Okay, if I can just reference your folder, so I have ready access, I could look.
Yeah, and there's, there's probably fifty or sixty different uses.
Is that?
I mean, it's, it's pretty broad.
It's pretty broad, but.
Okay.
Mo- most of it would be within the, uh, industrial resident, industrial land use category.
Well, I don't know, like all these.
Well, you do have some personal services and, uh, such as accounting, you know, offices, automobile repair services, which is what the, which was, that was the.
That's, that's the condition, there's.
Yeah.
You can only have a automobile, but now we're opening it up to everything.
Yeah, so, I would just go, uh, uh, you're ma- you're concerned, I'm, I'm assuming your concern is mostly for the industrial parcels, correct?
Right.
Uses.
Yeah, kennels and.
Yeah, kennels and grooming, so, uh.
And it does, um, on, in the ordinance here, where you guys are looking, I'll just, I'll read the, um, the definition here, light industrial district, the L I is primarily intended to accommodate limited manufacturing, wholesaling, warehousing, research and development, and related commercial service activities, which in their normal operations have little or no adverse effect upon adjoining properties.
That's kennel, so if somebody has a bunch of yapping dogs, that's.
Yeah, it looks like apparel and finished, uh, fabric photos, you got auto vi- audio, video and communications equipment. Beverage product.
The concept of planning board is to look at all of those kinds of things.
Correct.
Cause that's, that's what our charter is to do.
Yeah, so, because they go, they removing that condition, then everything that's allowed in the industrial zoning district can, let's take that into consideration. So you got, uh, brooms and brush- brushes, and most of these are like a manufacturing, uh, activities, uh, and warehousing. Contractors, or someone, uh, general and trade contractors, dairy products, drugs, I'm assuming that means pharmacy.
How about adult entertainment?
Adult entertainment, do you guys?
Let's see, where is that, I'm not sure where that falls.
Maybe in recreation.
What would be objectionable to somebody?
Yeah.
Topics, yeah, I, seems like alcoholic beverage may be allowed.
Uh, I think, no, I think, I think I saw, where it said beverages, I saw. Uh, non-alcoholic beverages are allowed, but I don't think, I think the ordinance broker had a distinction between alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages, I'm trying to find it here.
So, beverage, I think it did mention beverages, it may have mentioned beverages, but not as, like a, like a bar or anything, but more.
Yeah, so.
Manufacturing of beverage product.
Yeah, alcoholic beverages are only allowed in heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial, yeah.
And, and non-alcoholic ones would be allowed in light industrial.
Yeah.
Okay, I wonder if the one online's, uh, they, cause it's showing that it's permitted.
Oh really?
Beer, wine, or distilled alcohol.
Oh, I didn't look at, um.
See, beverage product.
Anybody else on the planning board can think of a objectionable use?
Is that different from what's on line?
Um, I'm not sure, like I said, I just pulled the one.
Yeah, there'll be, if it is, then it's different from what's in this, this book, yeah.
That's a question, that's.
Just, it's labeled beer, wine, or distilled alcoholic beverages, and that's got, uh, P under L I.
Where, is this, you're looking at, uh, section four dash three?
Yes, yes, table four, three, permitted use schedule.
Just by the, the definition where light industrial, by the, the limited definition that we've got in there, it doesn't really speak specifically to retail, it looks like a lot of this stuff is research, development, service-related versus a retail public operation. Is that spelled out anywhere in the list there, gentlemen?
Which, which one are you, I'm sorry, what's the?
Is it specifically, um, mentioned retail or sales? Cause it just says, um, growing population limits sprawl through the mixture of commercial business, institutional and residential uses accompanied by public open spaces. Research and development and related commercial service activities, which in their normal operations have little or no adverse effect on adjoining properties. You know, some of the operations in that general vicinity are auto repair, which is serviced, but not, and then across the street there, we do have a sales lot, auto sales lot. I presume we don't have an indication of what the intended purpose is for that property at this point, um, other than a very broad generalization. Um, yeah, so the, um, if I'm looking at retail trade, and again, I'm relying on the, the printed version of the, of the table, it sounds like it might be a variance with what we have online, for the ordinance, I'm not sure which is gospel, uh, at this point, um, but, um, the printed version with regard to retail trade, um, doesn't allow many, it allows, um, looks like it says.
Boat, boat sale.
Boat sales, uh, building supply yard. Um.
Computer.
Uh, computer sales, convenience store with gasoline pumps, um, uh, and convenience store without gasoline pumps. Uh, floor covering, furniture sales, a garden center, or re- or retail nursery. A manufactured home sales, motor vehicle sales, new and used, motorcycle sales, office machine sales, paint and wallpaper sales, recreational vehicle sales, uh, restaurant without drive-through would be allowed, service station, um, again, we've, I guess, yeah, service station would be allowed, uh, tire sales, um, a truck stop.
Looks like most of your adult entertainment establishes like massage parlors, bookstores, uh, live entertainment. Those are not allowed in the L I, they are more restricted to the G B district.
Okay, that answered my question.
Would the same go for like a sweepstakes type, you know, gambling?
Like a parlor, like a, one of the sweepstakes parlor type thing?
Yeah, just to make sure if we're talking about like things that could be contentious.
I don't know if you specifically speak to that, it may fall under one of the more entertainment categories, uh.
Yeah, I think bear in mind now that there is no structure on this property.
Correct, yeah, it's just, it's a vacant lot.
So, if you were to build something, I don't, I, I mean, this is, my, my own personal thinking is that I don't think I would build a sweepstakes location in that location. Uh, you know, if there was a building that could be converted.
Yeah.
Then maybe, but I don't know that, that you would get proper resources to actually build one on your, for that purpose.
That's right.
And I haven't kept track of what the legal status of those things is at this point anyway, it seems to vary from county to county.
Yeah.
Correct.
Whether they're allowed, or whether.
Correct.
They seem to open and close, open and close all the time.
It's still up in the air.
And we may have a large one coming in anyway, just down the road. Well, and, and, yeah, so, I guess a different part of the table, so one part of the table says, non-alcoholic beverages, I mean, alcohol beverages would not be allowed, but then, uh, I do see, uh, later on in the table, dealing with wholesale trade, beer, wine, alcohol.
Okay, I see that now, you're right, that's right, that's where it's, it's got it wholesale beer, wine, and distilled alcohol.
So distribution as compared to retail sales to the point.
That's right.
Yep, okay.
Manufacturing, industrial, beverage products, non-alcohol, you're right.
Could have a.
Yeah, so it.
Warehouse, or beer distributor, like, or a beeringger.
A wholesaler.
Right, beeringger could build a location there and distribute from there, but they.
Right. Behringer could build a location there and distribute from there, but they couldn't sell to the public.
Or you couldn't be having ABC store there.
That's right.
Correct.
Too bad.
We've already had that.
That's another, another, another topic.
I'm liking ABC store closed.
Yeah.
They do much drinking.
They already nexted.
Well, yeah, we already, we already crossed that bridge a couple of months ago.
Um, so a lot of, a fair number of things in the, in the wholesale area are allowed.
Well, T brings up a very good point, I mean, it's an open plot of land, so anything that fits. By definition in the LI is now open, where it used to be only auto repair.
Which was the original intent of the purchase of the property a year ago.
But, yeah, so you, yes, you have to consider anything that's permitted in the LI would be allowed in this, on this property. As the, as the application was submitted.
Right. Which is what, are trying to do now, figure out, is it okay?
Yeah.
No, 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 it's making it less restrictive.
Well, let this stew just a little bit and.
I guess, I guess we should take, go through the motions of opening a public hearing, uh, even though I don't see one to speak, but, uh. I suppose it'd be worthwhile to have a open and closed public hearing if.
Okay. I can declare, and I so do, I declare it open hearing.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna close it now, too.
Well, you can invite anybody who wants to speak and.
Oh, that's right, we're on, I'm sorry, guys, anybody in the internet?
Nobody is, uh, logged on to Zoom right now for comments and, uh, there's nobody in the audience, so. I don't think there's anybody here to speak in favor.
Or opposed.
Or, or opposed.
Or to speak, period.
Or to speak. So as chairman, I declare the public, par, public, uh, public comment period to be closed. Any other questions from the board that we might have?
Well, we don't have any idea what people are gonna do with the property right now, is that what? I mean, you only got one point seven six two acres, that's.
Of course, you know, any, they can say they, what they wanna do, but because it's just straight rezoning, you have, really have to take into account everything that can go into that.
Yeah, I know, not too far behind that piece of property, there's a creek. Goes under sixty-eight and goes down through there.
That's right.
Not that even. I think it ought to be taken into consideration what they're gonna be holding on it. Once the creeks all growed up and stuff anyway, as far as that goes, but I have seen it out of its banks. Not up on sixty-eight, but back in behind.
Well, okay.
Yeah, when, um. Doc had a sawmill and a sawpile back there, it got up in that sawdust one time back there. And of course, there's two old houses in there about ready to fall down, but it's not on this property.
Can they build a junkyard there?
Um, let's see.
Well, I thought it was attached to that garage trucking place down there, because they got trucks and all apart on the property. But evidently it is not tied to that.
Well, Ron brings up a good point, that anything they build will have to hit, uh, water quality requirements.
That's right, yeah, when they apply for building permits, the Gilbert County Watership Department would step in and. And make sure that everything meets their requirements before they would ever give them a permit to build.
Which is a good thing.
Junked motor vehicle, not allowed under LI.
Which, which category is that under, Robbie?
Let's see, junk motor vehicle is, um, under accessory uses and structures.
Oh, I got you.
Towards the top, then it's junk motor vehicles, it says D, I guess, development, forget what these stand for.
Development standards.
Standards apply.
Okay, so you're talking about, yeah, so we're talking about junk motor vehicle, not a junkyard or salvage yard, junk motor vehicles.
I don't know.
I guess either one.
That's what I'm throwing out to.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Everybody here, what pot- potentially objectionable use are we looking at?
Let's see, salvage, salvage yard. It doesn't look like salvage yard, uh, for auto parts or scrap processing is permitted under light industrial. And that's under. What category?
Might be heavy industrial, like a recycling yard.
That's under manufacturing. So, it doesn't look like.
No big smoke stacks and. Power hammers and stuff like that.
Washing machines.
No mining.
Well, I appreciate everybody throwing their oar in about what could be objectional use in this.
That's right.
Cause we really are opening it to a pick and a poke, we don't know what we're getting. Said light industrial, gee, maybe we'll get a Tesla Giga factory in there.
Does anybody know, the people that own this land, own that next lot that's already zoned LI?
Is it adjacent, maybe on your adjacent properties map?
Well, they do own lot D, which is across the street, across sixty-eight.
Sorry, they do own lot D?
Mm-hmm, Barefoot Investments, same, at least the same name. A and D are owned.
That's right.
Wonderful, build a big bridge over sixty-eight.
It's pretty tall trucks that come through there.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like. I don't know, they're all owned by, um, LLC, so it's hard to, to tell, I don't know if there's any common members or registered agents, but.
How is T?
Property B. I guess it's B C. Okay, evidently they don't own it.
Hardest forty, maybe. I think it's hardest forty. Oh, here's a better. Ron, there's a better thing here, it shows which ones are all the way the zoning is.
Yeah.
But it's two different property owners. Going to the thing here.
Yeah, there are no individuals on there.
B, B is owned by ASBC Properties and A is owned by, uh, by Barefoot. Okay.
Well, according to this, it looks like all this. All the properties around it, except for the purple piece, it's all ours residential, currently zoned residential.
So everything on the, on Lyman Street.
Is LI.
Is LI, yes, so it's consistent with the surroundings.
Well, in an attempt to move this around or move it forward, anybody? Thinking more, or should we just say okay?
I guess you're, you're, uh, you'd be making recommendations to town council, so.
Yes.
So, so you're not deciding, you're just, your job is to decide what, whether to recommend approval or recommend no, so it's kind of.
Well, my question is, or comment to the board, do we have any more questions, or should we take a vote on this? Any uncertainty in everybody, anybody's mind? Or any questions?
Was that the applicant that was here earlier?
I thought so.
Can you hear us? Motion?
Right. Chair will entertain a motion to approve or deny recommendation to the town council.
I make a recommendation to the town council that we approve it.
Mr. Southern has put a motion on the table to recommend a town council that we, that they approve the rezon. By removing the ordinance condition. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Stevenson, so sad, take a vote, Mr. Southern.
Well, we're gonna have discussion, if you want to have discussion among the members.
Oh.
Before, but.
I thought we had this discussion.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is there any discussion?
I would say, uh.
My consistency is.
Would address consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Oh, all right. Mr. Southern, would you amend your motion to, uh. Add the consistency statement that we usually need.
And that, you can find that on the, uh, on the last page of the staff report, under recommendation, there's a reasonableness and consistency statement. Feel free to peruse that, that's usually what I tell people to do, if, if they agree with it.
It's where now?
So on your, on your staff report, there's, uh, there's a section in there where the planning staff has recommended approval. And just below that, there's a statement of reasonable, reasonableness and consistency.
It's on page two of the staff report before the map.
Very last page, Ron, Ron, last page.
It's on the sixth page overall.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, right here, okay.
Sorry to stick you with that.
So the reasonable. That it's inconsistent with Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan designated to the town core. If approved, a, a future land use plan amendment is not required. Is that what you were looking for? Okay.
Shows that it's consistent, do you wanna do the reasonableness as well?
Yeah, and, and although with the paragraph ahead of it too, need to say that, um, if, if you so find. Um, that it's reasonable in the public interest because it's an area with existing surrounded land uses, et cetera. You see that paragraph?
Yeah, yeah. The proposed rezon act is reasonable and for public interest because it is in the area. Which exits surrounding land used on and light industrial. Good?
Robbie, is that a?
That's a, that's a valid motion, uh, Mr. Sleep, hold your second.
Yes, I do.
All right.
As I did.
Now we can vote. Mr. Southern?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Ms. Mailer?
Aye.
And me, also aye. I think we've flogged this around. Which is our duty to flog it.
All right.
Okay, last item. Announcements, next regular Stokesdale Town Council meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January ninth. Next year at seven PM inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council Chamber. The next regular Stokesdale Town Planning Board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-three, seven PM. Inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council Chamber. Chair will entertain a motion of adjournment.
So moved.
Mr. Stevenson makes a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
All right.
Gentlemen and ladies, thank you for your cooperation and persistence. I thought it was gonna be shorter, but that, we're opening it up to just everything.
Yeah, you start messing with that, it's something else.